Good morning and welcome to Washington Live. I am your host, Tim Elliott. It is Friday, December 29th.
It is.
2023. To my right is of course, my super producer, Alex Snyder.
Good to be here.
Happy Friday, Alex.
Happy Friday. Short week, short week this week.
It was a short week.
Especially for me, two day week.
Yeah, you took an extra day, didn't you?
Two days.
Which gave me an extra day off.
True.
Yeah. Hey, Alex, we're joined today in studio by our guest, Patrick Morgan. Good morning, Patrick.
Good morning.
We are going to talk to you about your new role within the city and try and figure out what the hell you were thinking.
I'm gonna try to figure out the same.
We got to get through a little bit of stuff here, Patrick, and then we'll be back and visit with you.
Sounds good.
First, we have to talk about weather.
Snow yesterday.
We had a little snow.
Exciting.
Had I been there Wednesday, if you'd had a show Wednesday, did you have a show Wednesday?
We did not. I was gone.
Yeah. You remember how to do all this stuff?
Yeah, hopefully.
You got your skinny pop over there.
I still got my skinny pop.
Did you, did you remove the, what was it, a pop tart or something?
There's a pop tart and a sucker. Suckers out in the break room. Pop tarts was gone last week.
So you know, the thing of that pop tart, you know what? There was a bowl game on you last night. It was the something Pop Tart Bowl.
Pop Tart Bowl.
Pop tarts were all over the place, everywhere.
Everywhere? They were everywhere?
It was everywhere. It was crazy.
They gave out, did they give out free pop tarts?
I can't, I can't say that. I can't verify, but pop tarts were everywhere in that thing. And I'm, I like pop tarts.
Yeah, I would go that. That sounds like the best bowl.
It was, it was, and it was exciting game, except I don't know who won. Did you find out?
Oklahoma, if I just read it right, they did 31, 28. So it must've been tied 28 apiece.
It was 24, tied 24 before, when I fell asleep, but.
I might've looked wrong, Tim.
It's okay.
I think it was 30.
I, I thought it was 24. No matter, Oklahoma won. I'm kind of an Oklahoma fan.
Sorry. Arizona won 38, 24.
Some of a gun. It was really a good game. It was a good game while I was watching it, but Arizona.
My pool, hurts my pool.
Hurts your pool?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I got, I digressed. I was talking about weather.
Yeah.
And I got talking about pop tarts.
And football.
Who won the pop tart game last night?
You did.
All right. Decreasing clouds today. That does not necessarily mean sun, but it is pretty cloudy out this morning. Did you look up when you were walking to work?
I can't say I, I can't remember clouds. I didn't look up.
Well, it's straight.
It's cloudy. Straight ahead.
High today, supposed to be a little windy. High today of 39, which I believe it already is like, no, it's not 30 yet.
Oh, it's, it's above 30.
Is it? Okay. He's my sidekick meteorologist.
Yeah.
Tonight mostly clear with a low of 26. Tomorrow, we're looking at cloudy, high of 38. So kind of a repeat of today.
True.
Community events, we don't have a lot going on. This is, you know, it's been a busy holiday season.
It has.
All the light shows and.
We've been, we've been gifted with our community events recently.
We have. So you're gonna have to really do some searching.
I am.
But the most favorite, you know, the probably the most favorite thing for anybody is the pancake feed that's coming up in January. I call it Pancake. I see that you have the Washington Fire Annual Pancake Day.
Well, I guess you should let the chamber know about your name so they can change it on their,
Well.
their website.
You know, put your own flair into this thing, Alex. That's what I like to do. Hey, that's Wednesday, the 10th.
It is.
So you got some time to get your tickets. I don't know where you get them, probably from the fire hall or firemen, they come around and I don't know. There's plenty of opportunity. They have a lunch from 11 to one. And there's also a dinner, which you don't have on my sheet.
I didn't know there was a dinner. Oh, wait. Oh, yeah. 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM dinner.
Yeah. So it's on the other sheet. See, here's the deal, folks. Alex doesn't always put things all on one thing. So I have to do a lot of, I have to do a lot of reading here to get through all this. So 11 to one for lunch, five to seven for supper. Takeout is available, which seems to be a really popular option now. I did that last year.
It is with the Christmas, the Christmas dinners did that too.
Yeah, yeah. But for the pancake feed, it's a good idea. You gotta get some of that.
Is it pancakes for dinner also?
Yeah. It's the same menu, lunch or supper.
You've never done it?
He's brand new. So he just moved here. When'd you move here?
August.
Yeah. So.
Yeah. You gotta go.
You gotta go.
You gotta go.
You know where the fire hall is?
I, I do. Isn't that big fancy firehouse building?
There you go.
Perfect.
You do know where it is. It's like two blocks from where you live.
It looks, it's very fancy.
It is a very nice fire station.
Look at the glass doors.
Glass doors. You ever see him when they test the lights on those fire trucks?
Nope.
All the lights are on in there. They fire up the lights. Looks pretty impressive. What else do we have? That's, that's all we have for community events right now. I'm sure Alex, since he was off for a week and a half, probably hanging out with Mike down in Mount Pleasant. Cause Mike has popcorn.
He does have popcorn.
We have nothing.
Skinny pop.
Nothing. Police report.
Police report?
Caller report.
I was just saying, no fun Christmas calls. I looked for them.
Really?
No fun Christmas calls.
Hey, hi, are we making any progress on Johnson County?
I don't.
That must be a no.
I don't know.
I've stumped you.
Do you, do you want it back?
I, that was the fun stuff. Maybe I could get like a, do they still publish the Daily Island? Would there be a police report in that or something?
Wait, they, they have, they have started posting again.
Did they really? Well, I, let's not do it now. Let's start the new year off.
Let's start the new year off with the, with the police report back.
I knew that your Freedom of Information Act ploy would work. All it took is a little prodding. So this is from the Washington Police Report. Caller reported seeing a red four door Dodge. You used to have a red four door Dodge.
Yeah, it's not mine.
Heading northbound on 218 with a gooseneck trailer. That cannot be yours. So that gooseneck trailer is losing items, wood and metal off the trailer. There's wooden debris all over both lanes of north, of northbound 218. 928, I think that's, I think that's Bill.
Bill.
Located the truck. The driver will return to the scene of the crime, clean up the debris. Bill, 928, also notified the Iowa State Department of Transportation.
Yeah. Gotta make sure the driver actually picks it up.
We're gonna, we're gonna get this taken care of, state. Don't you worry. I'm certain the guy didn't know he was losing stuff. And I don't know how in the heck it could come out. A livestock trailer, but hey, it happened. It's been written down. Uh, we also had a caller reported male subject is going through the dumpster. 928 again. Responded. He was a busy, busy officer. Responded and checked the area, but could not locate anybody.
People just.
Hey, there's nothing wrong with dumpster diving.
No.
And maybe this person just buried himself amongst the dumpster to hide.
So they couldn't find him?
Yeah.
He found treasure. Who knows?
Sometimes. I, I, I'm gonna have to admit, I did this one time in Baton Rouge, Louisiana.
Why did you?
I'm not gonna tell you how I was there. I was there with a group of people and they said, hey, we gotta go do this. I said, you gotta be kidding. But what I found was a, a pair of clippers that were still new and in a box. And by golly, I needed some clippers, so.
And that's what you use to this day.
I was the beneficiary of that dumpster dive.
That's how you give yourself haircuts.
Oh, no. That's a whole process. Patrick shares my,
Do.
my hairstyle. And there's a lot of advantages to this hairstyle.
Shower a lot quicker.
Shower a lot quicker. We don't know if he even showered this morning because he doesn't have bedhead, nor me for that matter.
We don't know.
We don't know. You'll never know.
Paula added a community event.
Oh, Paula, go.
Brass Pair is playing at Leroy, Leroy Brown's New Year's Eve.
Okay. Thank you, Paula. Leroy Brown's is in Ainsworth.
Okay.
Ainsworth is seven miles east of here.
I pass by there when I'm going to see Mike.
Yeah, you do. You do. It's on downtown. It's just down from the Opera House, just east of the Opera House. So we got a band playing there. I'm sure there'll be lots of parties all over the place, but Paula, thank you for letting us know about that. You've got that in your notes, don't you, Alex? Very good. I think that's all we have to do. Let's take a break and we'll come back and talk to the real reason we're here.
Federation Bank is a locally owned bank providing award winning customer service. We believe that we are more than just a federation of banks, but a federation of communities, serving Brighton, Richland, Wellman, Washington, Iowa. Federation Bank's highly skilled staff is here to make sure you are able to accomplish your personal and professional goals, whatever they may be. Federation Bank, your family bank. Family owned and operated by Andy and Sarah Ross. Ross Auto has been your vehicle repair and maintenance headquarters since 1935. We specialize in all makes of cars and light duty trucks. With our variety of available services, let us help you keep rolling in your vehicle operating efficiently. Services include general auto repair, alignments, brakes, fuel injection, and more. Schedule your appointment today at 319-653-5656. That's 319-653-5656.
I am Melissa Westfall with Homegirl Realty. Heather and Sharla and I have worked together for many years and we have always had a vision to have a business together. I'm Sharla Howard and the good news is we bring a very high level of experience. We have a combined 80 plus years of experience in this real estate marketplace. I'm Heather Merrick and Homegirl Realty brings a lot of things to the table. We have phenomenal communication with our clients, buyers and sellers to make sure things are going smoothly and you don't have anything to worry about.
Hey, Emmy, how do you organize a space party?
How?
You plan it.
Plan it.
Good morning and welcome back to Washington Live. We are powered by KCTC. Super producer Alex Snyder, he's doing stuff over there. I don't know, never know what he's doing. Keeps everything hidden from me.
Can't let you know.
You can't let me know? You never take your finger off of that one thing, switching cameras. You got Patrick on right now? Do it.
Now he's on.
Look at that. You're on. Hey, did I say we're powered by KCTC?
We are.
Thank you, Casey.
From KCTC.
And my guest today is Patrick Morgan. Good morning again, Patrick.
Morning, Tim.
You are our new city council member.
Yes, I'm excited.
Good. Tell me, what, what made you, I'm not gonna say you're new to town.
No.
Because you've been here for quite a few years.
Almost 10.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What made you decide to run for city council?
Oh, I don't know if it's just one thing.
We got time, Patrick.
Okay, good, good. So look, I'll try to keep it short and easy. Look, I think for the past year, a couple of other council members have approached me and said, hey, would you, we really think you'd be a great fit.
Awesome.
You know, would you want to do this? And so, you know, I thought, I don't know. Do I? But I kind of have a passion for stuff like that. I like to get involved. I like to ask questions, you know, I like to look at the betterment for things. How do we improve? How do we grow? You know, being involved in the community somewhat mostly through my wife and the activities that she's in, I guess that kind of sparked more of an interest for me to say, yeah, I think I want to do this.
Time to get involved.
Yeah.
So you've, it's official. You've been sworn in.
Official, yes.
And your first meeting will be?
Tuesday.
This coming Tuesday?
This coming Tuesday, the second.
You expecting a large crowd to welcome you?
I don't know. I don't believe so. If they're there, I'd be shocked, but okay, whichever.
So is there, is there some kind of councilman school that you have to go to?
Actually, that's, that's interesting. I have training I have to go through.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's Municipal Leadership Academy. And I have three different, I guess you can say courses or classes I have to go through. So I did a, to work in my schedule, I had to do the virtual one this first time. It's four hours.
You could zoom it?
I could zoom it, which I'm used to in my day job. So it seemed like being at work for an additional four hours, but very interesting, kind of the basics in this first one.
Like Robert's Rules and?
How does government structure work for a municipality? How do you rank? How do things work? A lot of people could ask questions. It was meant for not only council members, but new mayors. You have to remember, I mean, Washington, in the size we're in, we have six, six council members with the mayor, but not every town's that way.
Right.
So it's got to fit for everyone in the state of Iowa. And then I'll, I'll have another one here this next week upcoming, three other sessions. And then I'll do an in-person one, I think in April.
That's quite a commitment.
Yeah.
But it's also probably a good base of information because not everybody understands all the facets of city government.
Right. Well, it's, I think for anyone, it's obviously a learn as you go.
Yeah.
But you know, there's always those background details that you need to understand. So.
So you're coming in right in at budget time, aren't you?
Yeah.
Aren't you just tickled about that?
Excited. Yeah. I mean, I'm a numbers guy. I'm a data guy. So by day, I, so I work for Syngenta, but I'm an IT business partner. So I know a little bit what Alex is doing over there. I might know, I might know what button he's pushing. But, but I, I have a lot of number crunching that I have to do. So I, good or bad, I am going to be looking at numbers.
Very good. So, so you're gonna promise me here today that our taxes are gonna go down because you are gonna work on tightening up that budget.
I can't, I can't say that. But with some of the things that, you know, that I, that I know of right now, that's happening within the city, like the, the new hotel, you know, that here in the future will be more tax dollars for the city of Washington and additional revenues for the city of Washington. So, you know, to be able to, to have opportunities like that for growth, that's huge.
Got to have that stuff.
Yeah.
You need, you need the ability to have some more housing. Everybody kind of knows what I do for a living.
Yes.
We've got some developments coming, which is all good for the tax base for the city and the county. This new hotel is certainly going to be a boon, fits very nicely with our new YMCA, with the new pool that is now under construction that will bring in some more events.
And the wellness park.
Wellness park. I, I was just reading about that. Big numbers there.
There are. You know, they just showed us the last meeting, the phase two, you know, and so it's not that everything needs to happen in phase two. It's, you know, when is it appropriate? When does it work? But a lot of great ideas there. I didn't even realize that.
Yeah, I, I'd love the pond idea. I love it. I mean, it could just be a beautiful setting there. I don't know that I like 1.3 million to build that pond.
You know.
It seems like a lot.
It does. Any, anything does, Tim. I mean, every, I, I don't think we should get scared about the numbers first, right? We gotta look at what the opportunities are and then decide what makes the most sense. And then what can we do? How can we be more price point savvy on any of those things?
It seems, and, and I've been through this in different capacities. It's amazing to me how much things cost. It truly is. Like the new Y, I was, I was just shocked by that number because it grew. You know, when I was on the Y board, we had a number picked out for this and started fundraising. And by the time we raised the funds, you know, things happen and all of a sudden, everything is so much more expensive. So.
Yeah.
And cities have to be very careful, I'm sure, in their planning and, and all of that.
It's, it's a business, right? I mean, it, it really, in a sense, it is. You have to look at it that way and, you know, think about just yourself and just everyday life, things that are right now more expensive. Well, that's going to continue to just carry up the chain.
You bet.
So.
I bought a new wiper blades the other day. $80.
You must've got the fancy one.
I don't know what I got. I just had my oil changed. I had my oil changed.
Which that's right.
I used to be able to do all this stuff and still could. I just don't want to take the time. And I said, hey, wire in there, throw some new blades on it. It was kind of snowing. You know, there's that little streak that.
Yeah.
Throw some new blades on. 80 bucks. And I thought, wow. I thought they used to be like 20 bucks.
They did.
And they might still be.
Well, they ought to last year instead of one year, three years.
It seems like I do them every year. I don't know. Let's hope. Let's hope. Maybe three years.
Yeah.
What else? You're excited. So I know you've, I know you've been kind of sitting in on some meetings.
Yeah.
You're kind of up to speed with, with things that are going on.
Yeah, gotten there. So I've been sitting in, so actually in the last year, I was actually asked to take part with, we had a, a parking, put the city set, set together a committee. And so as a resident, I sat in on that committee.
You were kind of dipping your toe.
Yeah, a little bit.
City business.
And so, you know, that's where I got to have, working closely with Jim Lester, JJ Bell, Elaine, Isla, you know, so we all sat in that committee together and, and look, I liked that part of it. Obviously the parts that no one really likes when you bring it back forward and it's got to go to the public and, you know, everyone's got their opinion or thoughts around it and.
You're never gonna please everybody.
No, no. And I think that's the one thing to remember here is that it's not, it's never about singling someone out. It's never about that.
It's never personal.
We, we've got to make it work for the majority. We've got to make sure that it really can work for everyone. And yeah, that's, that's the tough part is that it's not always gonna please.
Yeah. But you're gonna take some grief.
Yeah. So I don't, yeah, I mean, I, I got to take part in that. And then a little bit of a lull and then the election came up. And so that was nice. Got to walk around, talk to people, tell them who I was, get a signature, ask for their support, ask them questions about, you know, what do you feel is important? You know, there, there's a number of things being looked at here upcoming in the next year. I know that we had a survey here. We got asked to prioritize around some betterment things downtown, additional improvements for downtown. We'd like to see something with a museum with Mr. Zaws, with some of the work that he's done, maybe a mural. I know we've, I think entry signs into the town, which I think is a great thing too. You know, that's one of the things when you come into Washington, you just kind of come into Washington. We need a nice sign. So I think that's good. I think there's just a lot more, right? I think there's going to be continued work with the wellness park. Obviously the things that no one likes to talk about such as water infrastructure.
Infrastructure. That is so fun.
Yeah. You know, it's, it's the stuff that people, they, they see it when it causes issues with driving and parking and all the equipment that's through. And then they leave and then it's like, what just happened? And we spent a lot of money and.
It's just, just on Madison.
Yeah, right.
That was a big water main replacement thing.
Yep. Yep. I think, I think there's still more. I need to, I need to look into that, that, some of the details I don't know yet. But I think we still have some continued work there as well as I know it's coming up here in the one to two year plan around some sewer, additional sewer infrastructure. Of course, always be street maintenance. I mean, everything.
Stuff gets old. And sooner or later, you gotta replace it.
Yeah, absolutely. It's just, it's just part of normal life, normal business, right?
Yep.
Think of your home, right? You have to roof it every so many years. You might have to replace windows. You might have to do siding. It's the same thing with the city.
Yeah, indeed. Patrick, let's take a little break.
Okay.
We'll come back and, and, and talk some more and then we'll play some birthday game.
Awesome.
All right. We'll be right back, folks.
At the Capper Auto Group, we put our customers' needs first and understand that everyone is as different as the vehicle they select. We offer new Ford, Chevrolet, Buick, GMC, Jeep, Chrysler, Dodge and Ram vehicles in a friendly environment that puts you in the driver's seat. When it comes to service, we maintain factory trained technicians and competitive pricing. The Capper Auto Group still believes that service after the sale provides the best customer experience. Come see the Capper experience for yourself.
You know, it's not a question of what all you have and so on with your life. It's who is in your life and how much you care for them and how much they care for you. And Tammy definitely cares.
I met Tammy about 20 years ago with, when her daughter was in Special Olympics and I was coaching. Told me that she was into doing senior benefits. We became even closer friends. She cares about everybody, especially the seniors. So call her.
In the heart of rural Iowa, where community matters most, the connections we make are made to last. Meet KCTC, your hometown internet, phone and TV provider. At KCTC, we're not just about technology, we're about people. Our dedicated team are your neighbors, committed to bringing you top tier services right where you live. We believe in giving back to the community that raised us. Experience the power of a real connection with KCTC. Join us in building a stronger, more connected Southeast Iowa.
Washington County Hospital and Clinics, providing quality health care that puts you first. Whether during a hospital stay, seeing a primary care provider for wellness exams or sick visits, minor surgery to a total joint replacement, or recovering from an injury, we're here when you need us.
More than you expect for your health care. Washington County Hospital and Clinics.
Good morning and welcome back to Washington Live. We are powered by KCTC. I am your host, Tim Elliott. Happy Friday. Alex Snyder, my super producer.
Good to be here.
Did you know that this is the last show of the year?
This is the last show of the year.
You, are you off? Tell me when you're gonna come back to work.
Tuesday.
Coming back Tuesday.
Tuesday.
So no show Monday.
No show Monday.
Show Wednesday.
Show Wednesday.
That'll be the first show of 2024.
Exciting.
You're excited about 2024?
Eh, I don't think, nothing's much, nothing's gonna change, you know? Maybe something will change. Is something gonna change? Is 2024 gonna be different for you?
I hope to be. The less is more. That's what I'm gonna say. How about that, Alex?
Less is more.
Less is more. Happy Friday. It was my triple M day today. I decided to have a.
Not a peach, please.
Wild, uh, wild dang.
Wild dang.
I don't know. Our guest today is, enough about you, Alex. Excuse me. Our guest today is Patrick Morgan, newly elected and sworn in city councilman for our city of Washington.
Ward one.
Ward one. There was my next question.
Ward one.
I think I'm in your ward.
You are.
If I'm downtown.
You are. So I'm, I'm gonna get close here. So I'm essentially the Northwest quadrant of town.
And it splits.
I think third is the split. Third down to Jefferson.
Down to Jefferson. All right.
So third over here takes a little bit of a jog when it hits Jefferson like this and then over, but yep.
Well, now that's good to know. You might be hearing from me often.
That's okay. That's okay.
I'm not a big, I'm not a big bitcher. But, but I do have things on my mind that I like to share.
That's good. We all should.
And here's the good news is we're friends. We've been friends for a long time. So it'll just be like us having a conversation, much like we are today.
That's right.
Anything, anything you're really passionate about that you want to try and make happen? Or are you just thinking, let's get your feet under you a little bit before you try and tackle an issue that's near and dear to your heart?
Yeah, I think. Yeah, I don't, I don't want to jump out of the gate too fast.
Okay.
Right? I, I think it'd be good for me just to get my feet underneath me first. But what I am passionate about Tim is Washington, just Washington. I think we have so much to offer. Um, big, big feel in a small town, right? You can do everything here and not have to leave. And so how do we keep that? How do we draw more people in? Uh, I think one of the, I think we're doing some great things. Again, the wellness park and the phase two, and even talking with Nick Pasha about that. He made a really good point. He's like, the, the things that we can offer here is what people are been getting and asking for in larger cities, you know, walking trails and outdoor activities and just more and more. And so that I think is, is big for us. That's a draw.
Continue building on that.
Yeah. And that's a draw for people, especially with what you're doing. How do we get people that want to live in Washington?
They got to have those things.
They got to have those things.
So that, that ballpark out there.
The other side of this too, I think is industry. How do we bring more jobs to town? And so you look at a thing like the hotel, that's great. And it does add jobs and it could, uh, inadvertently add more jobs even for the downtown and downtown shops and restaurants and such, because you got more people coming in. But how do we bring in something that's maybe going to land us 30, 50, 70, maybe even a hundred?
Should be, would be a really nice fit for Washington.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
So.
Well, we've got the business park out there that is, that is ever evolving.
Yep.
Um, those, those are all good steps that we've got in place. I mean, those are shovel-ready projects out there, you know?
Yeah.
So it's just a matter of, um, the city and wedge and chamber and, you know, everybody working together.
Exactly.
To find that, to find that right fit.
Exactly. That's, that's my hope. And of course I've got to remember, uh, this is a four-year term. So I don't need to come out and.
You don't have to get everything done this year.
Yeah, right. And it's, and it's never going to be that way, I don't think. But how can we start laying the groundwork and putting a plan together to, you know, start putting some things in motion? Like there's people have great ideas. And that's the other thing too, you know, not, you know, I want people to speak up. We, the city needs people to speak up.
Yep.
And that's one of the things I, I don't know yet. And of course it's just a reflection right now, but you go to a city council meeting and there really aren't, you get speakers that come and you get maybe one or two individuals that have some interest maybe in what's going on. But I would say come, like you can, you can write down and say, you know, I want to speak. Maybe you have an idea. Maybe you have something you want to bring up. I mean, the council works for the city. So I look at it. So we need people to speak up. We need ideas and we need to, to find a way to drive that passion within the residents of Washington that, you know, if they're wanting more, come tell us about it.
We got to, we got to talk about it.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't ever, it just doesn't happen. There has to be a plan to make things happen.
Yes.
And, and that, you know, there's several projects like that that, that ring true to that.
Right.
You know, the, the wellness park just didn't happen. It took a lot of planning. That's been going on for years.
Yeah.
And, uh, for that to come to fruition and, and still build on that is really cool.
Yeah.
Patrick, uh, I really appreciate you coming in. I really appreciate you putting yourself out there to be, um, you know, one of the council members to take this upon yourself, to, to work with the council and, and really the whole city to make us better. So, um, the pay is not great. You're not doing it for that.
No.
Um, so I appreciate the time that you and others, um, put into this and, um, um, hopefully you're around for a long, long time.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Tim. I, look, again, I, I am, I'm excited. I know there's going to be ups and downs, peaks and valleys, but that's with anything, right? So, um, it, it takes people, I think, like me and the others that are doing it now that, that want to, that have the desire. And, um, I hope that desire is still there. I'd, I'd really, this is one thing I'll mention though, too, that I think, um, was put in the paper a while back is Ward one cursed because they, they haven't had individuals so long that's been, you know, filled the full, full four years. And it's my intention to do that and maybe even longer, if it works. So.
Very good. Very good. Patrick, let's have a little fun.
Sweet. I'm ready.
Let's have a little fun. It's national days. We get to talk about national days. I knew this was going to be a dud of a day.
Yeah?
Yeah, I knew it.
Why?
I just, I had a feeling. So I did my own research.
Oh, you went, did your own research?
Yes.
What date?
But I also, you found the two that I found.
Yeah. It was, I had looked at two websites and they.
Well, I don't stop there. I'm a, I'm a.
You're a three?
Oh my, Alex.
Maybe a four?
I listen, I go deep in my research.
Okay. But these are the ones you found still.
I found those two. National Pepper Pot Day, whatever the hell that is. Happy National Pepper Pot Day.
Pepper Pot.
I did like this one. National No Interruptions Day, because it's truly the last workday, you know, workday of the year, although there will be people working tomorrow and Sunday.
Yep. Not us.
Not me. Um, I also found it's National TikTok Day. Now, it's not TikTok, the, the Chinese social media thing.
Okay.
It's TikTok Clock.
I saw that.
What was that show? Um, there was a movie, uh, TikTok, TikTok Doc. It's kind of a killer show. Anyway, so National TikTok Day.
I saw that one.
Got to put my glasses on.
Okay.
It's National Fun at Work Day. Do you see that one?
I did not see that one.
I am not a hundred percent sure that that is today because as in my research, I found out I was looking at other days as well. So.
Well.
And No Interruptions Day. So I, it was just kind of a dud of a day. There wasn't much out there for December 29th. But I like what I have. No Interruptions Day and TikTok Day. So go listen to your clock.
TikTok.
Um, Patrick, this is, uh, the part of the show where I seldom excel. This is the birthday game.
I'm going to try my best to beat you.
I don't know that you have to try.
Okay.
Very hard.
Perfect.
I know that it's important that my guests win.
Oh.
I don't ever throw it. I truly do try and win this thing.
Okay.
But I am on a substantial losing streak. Alex, it's been so long. I don't even think Alex can keep track.
Nope. Well, I'm competitive in nature.
Oh yeah, we both are. But, um, let's see what happens here. There are some people, I think I know all of them, but I don't know how old they are. So I, here's the only thing I've got on you. I see who they are before you do. But I don't have ages or anything like that.
Okay.
So I'm really good basing everything off the picture. So.
Oh.
It's just bragging rights. If you win, you can tell all your council friends that you beat Tim Elliott.
Now, am I only going off the picture? Are you going to give me the name with the?
You get the names.
Yeah. I think most generally I know everyone, but I may not, you know?
Sometimes Alex can put people up there that, that nobody has ever heard of.
Well, I've heard of them. So.
Except Alex. All right. Here we go.
Okay.
First one, Jude Law.
Jude Law.
Now you may go first or I will go first.
How, how do you want to treat it?
Um, I usually go first.
Okay.
Because I think that that makes.
That helps the.
Number one, it gives you a little more time and, and, and if I'm way off in your mind, then you can come up with something better.
Okay. All right.
Cause like I said, Patrick, I've been off by.
Now, do we hold this? Do we hold this? And then we both say at the same time? Or you're going to say?
No, I'm going to say and he's going to say and, and then he'll say, so if you get right on, you get two points or three. You change the rules on me. I don't know.
Two points.
Two points. If you were within three years, you get one point.
Okay.
Now we can tie.
Okay.
And that would be, I would consider that a win for me.
Oh, we don't have a tiebreaker picture?
No tiebreakers.
Paula put in her guess.
Paula's playing too?
Yes.
All right. Paula's, now you got to watch out for Paula.
Okay.
She's good. So she might beat us both.
Okay.
All right, Jude Law. I think Jude is, um, 46.
Oh. I'm, I'm going 50.
Talk to me, Paula.
Fif- oh, she did 57.
Oh.
But it's 51. So the only person who gets a point is our guest.
Wow. Now, yeah.
He's 51?
51.
Okay.
Next person, Seth Meyers.
He does the Late Late Show, doesn't he?
Does.
You stay up that late?
SNL?
And he did, came from SNL.
I don't, I don't watch any late night TV. Maybe a few, uh, maybe a few Guillermo clips from the Jimmy Kimmel Show, but that's about it.
I used to like Jimmy Kimmel until he went just AWOL on the political stuff. I really did use to like him. He was really funny on the man show.
Yeah.
Um, Seth Meyers, I, 54.
I'm, I'm 57 here.
Paula.
She did 49.
Speak up, please, Paula.
He is 50.
Whoa.
So Paula gets the point.
What the what? I'm still got a goose egg, don't I?
Wow.
All right. I got to come back.
Next person.
Oh, I like.
John Legend.
I like how you put one of his famous songs, All of Me.
John Legend.
He's married to, uh, Christie Teigen.
Don't know who that is.
That's his model wife.
Yeah.
She was a model. I think she's numb, not modeling. I don't know. Uh, John Legend. I, I have been so far off of everybody. I'm just going to go 51.
Oh boy. I, I will tell you, Tim, I think that's a little strong.
Okay.
I think I'm a little strong. I'm going to go, I'm going to go 40.
Paula's is 45 and she's right on.
Oh, of course. Paula, we got to get answers out of her quicker. Paula, you're not using your phone, are you? I told you Paula's tough.
She's a point ahead of me. Now I don't like this.
Well, she got, how many points she have?
She has three.
And you have two?
One. I have two.
He has one.
I have one.
Okay.
She's two points ahead. So you got to get this right on.
Was this the last one?
Last one.
Oh.
Denzel Washington.
63.
Ooh, that's tough. I'm going to go 64.
I'll make it so I can't win at all. I can't win.
Said 64 too. Same as you. 69.
Wow.
You are kidding me.
Nope.
Well, Paula, my dear, number one, thank you for the cookies last week. She bought me cookies. Remember it was National Cookie Share a Cookie Day?
She brought me cookies too.
Yeah. Loved every bit of them and I shared every bit of them, Paula. Um, I appreciate you playing. We're going to have to handicap you if you continue this massive win streak somehow, some way, Paula. But, uh, thanks for, thanks for showing up online. Others are more than welcome. This could turn into a show all in itself.
It could.
Just a birthday show.
I know.
And all of a sudden we have people all over Facebook coming in. Is that how they are talking to us through Facebook? Um, regardless, Patrick, you did beat me. So you can still brag about that. You just didn't beat Paula.
No, I didn't.
So you are the in-studio winner. Paula is the overall winner, but you did beat me.